We do have a floor on present and I will ask our invitation all by itself, we would say so listen. I certainly thought of somebody this morning, thank you for this one, he's very good. And we just thank you so much for all the work that you've done to encourage us now, amen. Because this community is through this, and people got us and the country has been doing best to help us again. So here you are with us. And we just ask you continue to bless and support this school district and also all assets that you provide us with. In the name of the Lord, amen. Um. You will get better. All right. There will be four here, um, four announced today, the agenda in front of you. Seeing the motion for a present, they have given us. As the motion on the top, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Young, any discussion? Seeing that discussion, all of those have been signified by her hand. The evening is next. Next we go to our Columbus Municipal School District, we pray through this. And let's talk about my first.
Thank you guys, I don't have a word to say. Um, something to say about meeting and everybody. Um, and now a light can be seen, it's just a community, it's a big house. That's the whole community that works and students, but it's not just, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Good morning. Glad to have you all here, I'm honored to be here before you came, to be a part of a special, great history. Quite out to come apart, to go with family, now we're setting these first I have to hear. We have a technical time, let's do this, gesture. Um, maybe this, and there's so much new on to the rest of you. And I'm. Yeah, the water, I think you all need a lot, I gotta, I gotta bring you some. One, the family business, what is this? It's one of the other times, the other family business. It's often forced, it's not wrong whether you make it happen. The son, who you are, you have to think, there's nothing, there's this. Um, then you had it. So what's next for one? To know where you're, where you're going, you gotta see chat. You gotta figure that, eighteen twenty-one? Eighteen twenty-one, March, the beginning of Columbus District. Columbus Academy was the first school in Mississippi, two hundred years since, since twenty-one. The oldest of the school in Mississippi, that's the milestone to be very proud of. That four, eighteen fifty-five, you have meeting at the first African-American school, which marked the foundation and the beginning of formal education for African-Americans in Mississippi. The logo on the left, I may have stepped on a few toes, the first, the logo on the beginning of the process, did not first to the store in the top, but it's, it served a purpose for the time, but the concept and the heart still there, and you want to stay that way, and if you got it on me, and it's very good. You can't see this from where you are, but this is one of the first classes, and that four, nineteen forty-five, and his legendary man, next on the left, is those unknown, the Robert Hunt. The man is an icon, he's so iconic, that they named the school last name. The beautiful thing about Columbus, nineteen sixty-four, Artie Hunt, soon became a neighbor for eighty-eight thousand, and after that, the students were in the high, and said, yes, and raised the, the society, or after society, nineteen seventy-one, is still integrated, fully integrated, and Hunt, it comes to our meeting, and we receive, closed in two thousand and one, only to reopen in two thousand and, two thousand and four, four hundred and, um, as Artie Hunt, most comfortable, and he's in the home of the town. All of that just tells me that no matter what strong African community, they always, no matter what struggle they face, no matter what, the size, the story, the history, the weight, the speed, they got it down, and no secret. They always take the head down, they remind me of, you know, for, and for modern everybody, from the one. You may have heard, seen, heard around the world, the young kids from the bottom, from the Mississippi. Small little town in Mississippi, and tweeted in the world listener, and affected change. That illustrates the power, the naughts, and the mess, for the past, and the present, and it shows what's in the future is gonna happen. So, I'm at this point, I don't like it, but I think Mary now will be doing some stuff up there, so bear with me. Digital identity, this is what we have been talking about. The brand identity, is what makes you a part of the community, the better than the school. It shows what you are, and what you can, what they accept you. If one of the brands continues to pop, it's true, that you know, the digital identity, like the political design, that actually betray you are, what you are, and what you hope to be of you. And brands will make you, whether it's your history, the city, acting, promise, or anything else. Build a brand around, and just. With that being said, for Columbus, we won championships, we've, uh, we've a topic, missing under the identity of someone else. This is the topic, all over United States, but one of these, we give them, the minute finisher, like seeing one of the first, definitely the first in Mississippi to say, you know what, we want our own identity because we're in control of all the stories. So the last five people gonna go out there, what party changes to, it's still the last five people gonna go. Thank you. Yeah, no matter what logo you pick, if you want somebody else to help out, that is, you can decide to do the top two. Quite often, so, past twenty twenty-one, what's next? The Jerry was fine, like I said, the next one between the, the seven, Columbus is the seven, it's a part of history, and we're doing our part. What's, that's what we're doing now, for the work of history, so together, we can just not, to get into the point. For being very specific about the choice, you may use brand, well, dwell on this too long, but it's been a million persons, it's been many, um, y'all, they resolve, all this is very important, it's all from bottom. When we started, we could buy some people who ran in, and Franklin Academy, it's a fun unit. It's very deep, very dark, it would make me, it's up on the dark path, but we're going to a brighter future. For the garden's purpose, it's y'all head to the lightest yellow, represent the dark path, and your cash, and we're going to a brighter future, more optimistic than ever. So, getting into it, the new mission was of the first book, there's a C M, and it's a torching the life of the middle, representing lighting and leadership. Who better than the first public school in Mississippi to exhibit leadership? It's not so long as that, very simple, fun, to the point, they have different variations of the logo. You learn, and what you learn through the value, is the seed, all those don't work in the same environment. You have the field, that may work better on a Facebook profile, and may work better on a, on a label. And I'll make the point more of that. They work better on a label, there's options, you don't like ourselves out, of making the best of the space. So going forward, meaning, meaning academy, I thought it was fitting to have that original line, be the base for every school, I mean, every school, and I really missed the champion recognition that we used last year, I thought it was really not here, it's a team effort, and you all got to run together. But with that being said, everything that's in the new Union Academy print, comes directly from the original. And I think that's just, it helps already going forward. So, like I just mentioned, this represents all the schools, um, they all have their own CEO, and they all have a piece of history to carry forward, from all the entities that we've had since. And it loves food, everything has thirty accents, all the things are very offensive. Obviously, a poor from the, uh, mother school, you know, the example, but even the, the edgy, the soft edgy, all that stuff, not particularly, feathers, that's going forward. Um, Franklin Academy, we did a lot for Franklin Academy, we had to do a lot, the academy, we had to buy some new models, of, they had several variations, just to give us options, but we still know what it is. So, one, when people think logo, then you can think address logo, so, you want to give them a bird, if they wanted to get dirty bird, you want it to be a fierce, aggressive, bird. Their own stories, dark color, going from light, I mean, dark to light. Want it to be aggressive, but, and speaking at the same time. And most important part, I don't want to talk that, when we're dead, the civil art line in there is protecting. All we logo is protecting with the Secretary of State, we, we register them, we got them, do this, we did, because it's going on the process, and that's important, because now, outside venue is going to be selling your identity. If somebody's going, they can take any kind of legal action they want, that's very important, to take ownership, and that money that was going out of the district, just wasn't, it's coming back very long. Dolphins, Secretary of War Mark, we got it all covered. We got options here, not lock and chip to just, um, document it. You know, academics, if I'm going to a debate club, um, meeting or a debate, I probably, I probably don't want to wear the document here, I want to build a more classy, I want to rock the seat, it's awesome. That's the markup of what you can expect, after the meeting, maybe to walk around and see the other side is, um, physically, you know, that they actually have the logo on it, but, um, this gives you an idea of what that logo looks like. And I was starting to talk to the boss, and I was a possibility, that, I think, oh, yeah, but I was starting to talk to the boss, about the possibility of building yourself up to, when you have a, a brand. So, Columbus Air Force Base, as soon as you get to see, you see that. Establishing those relationships, reaching out, that secondary logo that's dedicated specifically to the Air Force Base. Maybe you bring it out, it's an awesome logo, maybe there's a military knight, we want to take honor, bringing the military, um, man and women, and that logo from, you know, the helmet, the shirt, anything, just showing effect. If you look closer, to get a better picture of this, there's a white ring ball, was directly, you know, paying honor to the Air Force, they are powerful, but the white and balls, they're, they're lower, over there, and, um, it's, and merciful, I mean. This is the revenue generation, like I said, outside venue, you know, to do this stuff, but now, you have the knowledge, which you should, and you can control what happens with those, with that revenue. And as you can see, the possibility of being ended with that. So, with all that being said, the smallest town in Mississippi is now on par with some of the biggest colleges in Mississippi. The Brandon Hold, there is, there is, uh, that, as he described, the, the biggest university in the day, and I think one of the teams is one of them. Like, I might do the right, but I might not, because, um, okay, and all the teams, if you make something chaotic, work. Together, we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your hard work and your time, just very beginning, and all the committee members, Dr. Vought, and stuff, and others who have really took the time to, um, to get into the, um, not the most details of the history of the district, that's why I, I'll ask that we include this, so thank you very much for all the help. Uh, board, any questions, any comments regarding, um, the presentation and reveal? Thank you, it's great. Yes. Thanks very much for this. Next we go to, um, our either of the agenda school board minutes. Uh, we have our October the fourteenth, October the twenty-third, and October the twenty-four, uh, minutes for approval. So I need the motion to approve all the minutes. As the motion by Mr. Fart, do I have a second? That's the second by Ms. Young, any discussion? Okay, hearing that discussion, all of those have been signified by her hand. The evening is next. Now we got a special time for the discussion, uh, we'll be, uh, all right. Uh, now we go to the discussion and consideration of the captain's food plan for receiving that deed. Um, this is an item, uh, that we have been working on it, and I know that, it's not, I know it's in a package, the spread sheet we talked about, I emailed from this leader, and he's ready to attack it, for all the meeting access, and all the way from two to three, uh, before they ask him, I said, uh, for this time, I'll finish, uh, Dr. Vought. Thank you very much. And I'm the end.
Um, the union is large. I don't remember, the team names all this, it was all right, it was the, the team, um, I don't remember any half, I don't remember the last half, I mean. I haven't thought of it, though, I don't see the news today, getting media off the hot screen. I think the public media from the hot screen itself, uh, getting media from the, from the state, uh, uh, from paying the wife, it wouldn't be able to do that in half. You know, within yourself, the staff, and the group, what we're doing right now, is we, uh, I put in there, it's pretty much, I put it up on the web right now, we're doing the school by screen, and doing the, 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 the. We do that with the live on screen, and, and we just do that there, so, here, here, the front window, going down, the screen. Here, there, the front, there, there, and then we just do the surveying. And put the whole surveying through the house, there, especially what, we don't have time to do that in half, with the motion to the team, with the live, I believe, that we don't hear it, from time to time, with the team, so it's maybe a long amount. Not being a sale, I think sale is cheap, and all, like, the technical, the third, there's a five, there's a, uh, since when I think of the last year, that man has been, he's been, he's been, he's been, he's been, uh, maybe that, the two thousand, three, he has two. So, there's everything there. Uh, we're gonna check this free, like I said, we took that, uh, maybe start my, the new, I think, I think that, and I feel that side venue with the amazing thing, that, that we can do in half. Um. I think the future happens, that's what I'm doing, and all of the programs, uh, we're going to have an office there, to, to, to fit the hall, uh, through that. And I'm looking at the practice, the values, there's a hall of learning, uh, I think the only, uh, one thing. Uh I think the only thing that we're going to say, very many of them. Is that all of the board is up, the new board, except for Steve. And they're about there, they're supposed to put the news there. But we're not doing that right now, that's what we're looking at. Certainly all of the programs, it's a fact that I can see our point of view, that I think it's on. It's a matter of. And the stage. That's why I'm going to figure out if we need to send them there, outside venue. The new. Starting that, the new equipment, uh. As far as the technical thing, I mean, I can just go through and. And the corner, the whip, the pit and stuff, we didn't want to pull up. Uh so the song I did, the new special, the wall plate, the new thing, that. That he's telling us, one, two areas that uh. We can use and trip, then you can fabricate something in software. And not a boat, a board, and start fabricating on somebody that's quicker. If somebody is first, then they're wired before. But those, those things are good, maybe we can pull it up. Uh we can do a picture of it, and pull it up, or what you may want to do. And that's what I'm trying to do, and we need to know that some of the things we do. Over the past. Uh so, I mean, our fourth year, hopefully fourth year, we're going to have a meeting. And especially in the second year. And when you, when you first start working, there's many companies that. Uh possible, yes. Definitely mostly that outside venue, that outside, we're going through, 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 right now. In your position, and we're right there. I'm, I'm going to say. Listen. Listen, if you want to do three, I said, as far as sales, maybe we'll look at our revenue. So if sales today, we say, we're there, they're there to happen. And the new chair, the sales, and we try to talk to the students. And I have a statement, we're there, special watching the law play, stop the season, and I'm letting on their folks. And what's out to the, especially what's all to be seen. We need to go, it's a last thing. Uh I would suggest, I would say, I would say still, the D F S P. The side of two where the. They're sure, uh we need to see, right now, below that unit. Uh so what we're doing, we're taking the whole. Special law, so we're going to, you see by right, and then have to tell us, even if we're the D F S P where the. Uh still, we're leaving, we're in this team, I can ask that, we're the team. The true, we, uh, definitely, I can do this. If they do have it, if they're the leaders of the, and the higher ups, as far as the team. We have to, we have to. Uh the same way. Uh this is, this is. This is actually. This is just one of the sound three outside, it's on the field now. Uh the vision, and you're here, and you're all here, the vision, the special war, that would have to be the. The reason, the reason, I like the news, it's what I'm hearing. Next, I do, uh, whether, to gather, I suppose, the new special, what's this? The case is same, and whether it's the far as where it's here, that the people here. Uh see where it's in fact, uh and very hard and difficult to say. I think he says the last, they need to. Something like this. There's a two five nine that is worth two fifty. The even the lessons, the three, the record, especially the value of two hundred. And that's next to you. Uh, so the day. Behind the scenes, and we, that's how we do it, my team, we do stories. Uh the video thing, I saw that much there, and the video thing is all here. And. This is going to be the outside venue, with the, we told the, the. Um. Okay. The G T F interesting, and I know very very well. Uh I had another speaking, some years, and I was like, this thing is. Know the names, again, the new package, behind the, behind the, behind the. But outside venue, just from the home side, I would have said, at least at the last stage. Standing forward, and definitely outside venue, too, as far as being a man. Here at this, what my mission is, wants to be in the best possible country, and the home, president, state, speaking, I feel like there's a hundred and fifty more. Uh but really, taking the outside venue, that actually, uh, that's what we have a home, and not a, because we, we have a whole, still, we do. The G A D is talking about, you're a good school. Saying talking about, that's fifteen million, so there, it's a more early. Uh. Uh. And he's lying around, but anyway, um, and take that ease down there. And all that, with that, too, that's the one. I can remember the best thing. Uh I don't remember the list, the case, the guy, many, many years ago, there is a man, I think. The G R I, the G N R I, uh. Think the best, you know, for a month. Uh that way, we may have seen that, yeah, that's a big issue, and something for the years. Uh here, this is my, my, I have tech follows. Uh I can get someone, and follow whoever's told you. And you can hear them, and go out and test the hose, before the hospital. Uh if you have someone that's there, and see the dust, and football players. But if you have somebody that's always up there, they're running out, or they're just bored, and. And then we do it, test it with the team. I've heard you wrote the best one, very neat. Uh the visiting gentleman, he had followers, he did, very neat. And that's why I'm thinking of this thing, and that I have to understand that, it's kind of a hard theory. Hmm. The thing is, on the side, uh, there's a football player, we invest it this time, and you get a first team. Uh it's not going to, it's not going to be a, 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 a. The deal is, is the fact, uh, the company, uh, is not for me. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, uh, uh, not, not. There's this party, yeah. Uh the main, all of that, that's a new video. Uh I had, we didn't see the video, uh, started, we didn't see the video, that's me. Uh, it's been back to work, and I'm giving it here. The G A D, special war for itself, has a, a, the outside venue. Same shirt, we're doing it, sometimes we just, very strange, we're going to do it. And then I could, I could bring variation to the outside venue, that we're talking about. It's not fair, I mean. Just watching, fourth law, um, shot, we need to do that, anyhow. There's the test. First one is the official, the home, there's the side, you have the outside venue, same, just four of them, that. Stay in your eyes. Uh, you all have to know, they're going to be wired. Uh. And then you need to, just next, even if you need to visually wire, and fix the wire, you have the layer. Or you have to, you have the layer to be wired, and be wired, and all of that, too. And as far as that, we do that, we do that, and do that. Well, G A D does that, anytime you want, that, that the top is going to go up. The only thing is, uh, that he's wired, I mean. That there you are, about seventy thousand, that, we know this can go up, and that. I'll read it in the notes, and he says, the next, two hours, we need to do it here. Uh that there's a difference in wiring, that's the thing that's right. You try and do wire, but when you do wire, you need to, but it takes a lot of time to master. To do it. That's it. What's the other thing? Then you know what, you you want to need, uh to hit the first person in the air, there's no very much, there's like. Different variants of that. And to get the access, the access in the store. You get the thing, you do the other thing, you charge fifty thousand dollars for maybe, the meaning of having, give the mask of anybody in certain town. This is the end of that thing. If you if you're looking at the picture, if you're looking at the picture, you know, you got the other one, you know, so you can. You got a place, there's a place, you can. Well, that, that's another area that, that I believe you can do this, you do it now. Uh and you go with the, and everybody can do this. And you have to have somebody to know what you need. Uh because I have three years going to act in. One company, uh in biotech, one company that's in the middle, but that's the way that they're supposed to be. To put it out, the video, you need to specify, I believe you need to specify exactly what that is. If someone has to, if someone is showing us that team. I think the rule is, see what we have, what we need, not be a dream, do that for twenty thirty dollars, but for a hundred and fifty. And that's everybody has their own team, and that's what they need to do. Uh so that's what I think. Because the following has got a video, the video, the video, the video. See the video, you can hit to the player, the line, then you need to hit the side of the. So if you're trying to, I don't know, what we need, what we need to do. I think it's uh, I think it's two hundred, so we know where to start. There's a million, that's a very good, and I think it's a three year long term. I think as far as the business, uh. And I've heard something, I mean, I said, you know, we got those other students that are here, and and we just had, well, there was. At last time, they didn't do any school, so they were like a shit. Later, this one was on center, and we got found out what they got, and then, I mean, I don't know, there's dangers, but. Just come and do, I think they're four, and do the assessment, and just give them kind of a blank slate, and say what needs to be played, and do not all this, and then you can go through the list. With uh, my good friend, if you did, or if you're gonna do that. That's why I asked the guy, that the hundred and fifty thousand, which that's a very large, it was the one that started it too. And he gave me the private tip, like, to do that. And so the following, the team that I've seen, and then started the. Initially, here is fifteen, you need to know, you need to do a line. Because the fire goes bad, uh they don't have this system, and people are not, you know, you get the fire, that's why I did it for this. It's just everything. From the fifteen, the lines, the lines, the speeches, the two thousand. Uh everything is here, the main reason, the telephone, and that's how it's been used, but it doesn't mean things can help us to win. It doesn't mean, that's why I did that. The others did. Uh the guy, many of the officers and very people. They even became very much a learning, and uh, instead of all that, I think we need to just remove everything that exists. The fifteen is there, I'm not sure how old it is, it's almost like a player. Uh so I mean, that kind of experience, when you start looking at playing, you need to hold it up. You have one wire, but there are no limits. Uh but I feel that they're huge, they're huge, and they're. But I can always get them a finance and focus with the team, and uh.
I think that's one of the, I think that's one of the first things, the very first thing that they had to learn. The theory was wanting to, they were looking at the field just to start, the very first thing. Doing such a lot of things, there is a theory, usually, certainly not, and see that area that they're not really driving in. They were trying to drive a few areas and they're having a terrible area around the district, so they have a really bad reputation, so at least we can remember. All right, so, let me do all, because we can thank you very much as well for, on the detail, the view of all this project, we've got kind of, you know, but I know that there was several things that you pointed out, the stadium light, um, of course, you know, the concrete, some of us are continuing to be built about, uh, what the P S is going back to our school, at the high school, uh, but there are some items down here that I see are the Franklin, the painting, I mean, if you've got six floors, then the third dial from the other thirty-eight dial, there's the ward, uh, and of course, the pressure washing, uh, and said, we do all areas along, forty-five coming up in first part of the school, and sidewalk on the other side, so, if we could, uh, and, um, Mr. Rogers, we could use our fifteen section fund to, uh, do the improvement there at Franklin, correct? I, I, I was asking if we would be able to use our fifteen section fund, the money between the fifteen section fund balance, to do the painting at Franklin, as well as the pressure washing at Franklin. Okay, so instead of taking funds out of our eleven point one, we'll use our sixteen section, and some sixteen section property meanwhile, we did an improvement program and guidelines for us to use that, uh, those dollars, and so, I think we got somewhere north of fifty plus thousand dollars in that sale, after our last review, so, is it okay if we go in and take that action, to approve the painting, as well as the pressure washing at, um, Franklin, or we all came through next to that? Is there any, do you want to, do you want to add something? So, if you, um, if you can, you know, maybe, um, if you can, if I can, um, just wanted to remind you, uh, especially, uh, they don't have to do the barriers, and then you do the side, I can drive, maybe, if you ever do that, you can have to walk there, and everybody wants to, get used to that. But this one, I didn't want to do this one. And on the fourth, the painting, um, there's really, really good things to look at with this. And then also, yes, picture, you're beginning to face of authority, with placing off in this thing itself, and so, the thing we can tell about the roof. The thing is, those things, they're already here in the power of that, and so, it's, 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 um, we have to move. Would you say, would you do a conditional appraisal on any other details back to you? Okay. Okay, so would you do a conditional appraisal of painting, as it's been used for thirty thousand dollars, um, would you include, uh, facility, but not the windows, if you obviously have the, immediately put out that, uh, and then also, we want to include the pressure washing, and then you gotta get two floors of what started going, not to see what was presented here, to go down, um, and you're gonna hold off on the pressure washing. Now, I think this is the sidewalk on the year. You want to do something with how, um, everything? That's fine, yeah. Yeah. So, if anything, yeah, 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 and, and, yeah. Yeah, okay, okay, all right, so, do you have, do you have any idea what the roof cost to be, yeah, uh, so would you hold on, and let's see, would you believe, or the best, we need to have a team to, you know, if there's a, if there's a, so, yeah, we, we sort of can get the numbers back in the wood, and then we can come back and, um, take it all, so we, we have like a, a team to, to do that. Right? Right? Okay, all right, thanks very much, just a little. All right, that brings now to our item of the Hunter Suders, Hunter Suders, and so, now I'll turn it over to you. I'll turn it over to you, instead. Might have to come around here. Yes, okay. Okay, so, so we do, we have second time, second hand, so we, we're looking, if can, if the place are really smart, and they're very, and they're essential, and they're worth it, and they're essential. Uh, the defense did, so let's see, I can leave it explicit, we did have five layers, uh, the low base, the self-competitive, we're out of the deal, they worked with a new company to pass, and they were very happy about, you know, lifting some factors, and especially bigger factors, uh, that's, that's a long picture to do, and it's, 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 it's there. They had to look at the two hundred, two thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty, eight hundred fifty-three, and I had to have the lower base, too, to be done, it's thirty days. Uh, thanks for the five layers, too, you do that a little bit before, uh, today, or, um, two, that's, that's, uh, to, to have the lower base, to have the ten times, which we have, which, uh, every day, uh, if you'd be able to find a meeting, uh, if you're out there, I would be just happy to be there. All right, um, board, is there any questions about, um, the reason we need to speed it, or the student tax that we have? All right, um, one question I have is, all the others on the classification teams, were higher than thirty-six, and the courses were fully drawn with, I think there's maybe a couple there, can you tell them why there was a difference? If the courses, if that's the, not a very, very long, but, 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 yeah, probably the, uh,
September of the four days, in fact, maybe the last four years before ten days, if we ask about it. So you can do a next year, you know, you're getting that information.
We take care of.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, board is, uh, any other questions regarding the, uh, staff personnel? You have the most who have the best, if there's no question, all eight, six, five, right hand. Any opposed? And then pass four to one. Now we go to, uh, consideration discussion to approve the, uh, agreement from GMSD and debt energy. Board any of the motions to approve? As the motion by Professor Sparr, do I have a second? And the judge, if I don't see my, any discussion? And here's the discussion on favor for the standardized right hand. The issue man. Uh, next we have consideration discussion to approve advertised for many learning camps via sixty seven. Uh, this is submitted by the information system. Um, and so, couple of questions. I know Dr. Bud mentioned that, I think, that Lawson would be the first to answer the question. Um, so Mr. Lawson wants to do that, come on down. All right, and then also one question, when the finding decided saying, is this already in the book? Okay, where was this found in the book? Okay, all right, so what's our map when we carry that for this person? Will there be any map that we have to put up, or do we not have to play by carry that?
It, you know, it's only one of the classes, it is, I don't know, how many classes we have. Uh, I think it's like sixty at the high school, and very early in the high school. And around fifteen, twenty, I don't know if you've seen it, um, I'm like, I don't know if I've ever been to the senior year program. Uh, but even if it is, I think it's, uh, so. Maybe they said, well, it may be, uh, it's not a bad way to, to get even more, um, better.
I mean. I mean, are you? Can I talk about it?
Right.
You only get it, okay, okay. All right, so, um, there'd be two hundred light minutes throughout the whole district, first class throughout the whole district. Um, each individual school did their point. So the principals were able to identify the high levels of areas that they cared about. Uh, I don't know whether that would be, um, every, every classroom in the district. Um, but it's sixty in middle school, around thirty or forty in the high school, and then it's around fifteen to twenty in the low school. Um, and I think every classroom in, for every classroom has been used in, uh, I think that's. This, this system comes with one camera, um, two microphones and a speaker. So what this will allow, um, is, uh, it will be, uh, as if virtual students were. The teachers and the students will be able to hear clearly what the virtual student says and like. All right, so, outside of the actual part where what type of support or other? Uh, I guess, even the purpose, how long does it feel to have these systems, working, anything like that? The system is pretty manageable, uh, honestly. Uh, important work, the work, you can be saying, we're working on it, um, it, I don't know how long it is, I'm just thinking about it really. Um, as far as support, it's going to be on me and my team. Um, this, this system is super easy. Uh, it doesn't have to access the internet, um, it literally gets USB data. So, uh, it all hooks up into USB on your iPad or to respond to their computers that they're bidding. Um, I think Microsoft's being certified, which means, as soon as you want the team bidding, they'll automatically connect, uh, to the camera, it will see that camera on everything on the scale. Um, so not much support, I've already done a, a meeting on it, uh, I did a, a little sample about how this works, uh, for the principal's structure for the management team. And then I did a recording for the principal to share with the teachers, uh, I did feedback on that. Uh, I can organize a super review, uh, or actually the two UIs we have to do to teach it, basically that, so, teaching very, very many. Yeah, and the last question, and this may be more for Dr. Vito or Dr. Bud or the press corps is, how are, how are we trying to use this as a school of reaching, say, parents who may be transitioning to the home workforce stage or homeschooling, or other things that might get, prevent it from force work that we offer to the students? Outside of just our own population to return it to birth?
Say what?
Well, tell me you have thought about this already, right? I'm a parent, I'm not, I'm not even in the school.
How would you support parents coming in?
To be, to be clear, I mean, certainly we did benefit of what we do for our population that's already in the district. So how are we using an outreach tool for parents that, that are transitioning from base to base that are coming to Columbus and they have it in their mind of, or maybe they need to go ahead and connect locally to schools before they actually land here in our family and try to chat, grab that people population. How are we trying to offer this out as alternative for classwork or homeschoolers that now they can connect in and they're ready to do this? It has something we can look into, the trial?
Get a staff, plus we're showing students, to know, you know, how we're doing here to make it a city.
And, and reasons because in the midst of, well, before COVID, the Department of Defense made me a candidate, and that was one of the things they were lobbying legislators before they actually had residency out of base, being able to go ahead and because students connect into a district before they arrive with continued force work and other things that they may be used to having there. So they're already familiar with how things go there, so that's my question, how are we using this as a bridge between us and those people of Blackstone to gain students, to gain more interest in the district?
That could, that could be used. I, I really have to be honest with you. Plus, that is an idea that's something that's evident.
It has something, maybe in the few media studies we hear from about some comment that they'd be using at the building level to facilitate recent residents populations?
Yes.
Well, I think the biggest thing is using the education liaison, especially, uh, use what's there, and I call it letters, please. To go ahead and let them know what we're trying to institute here, so that they can go ahead and see how that down goes and what they're doing.
Another question I have is, I know Dr. Smith, you said the year before, you were on schedule to replacing buses in the fleet. So how many buses in this last year did we replace?
This year. Sixty-five.
So we don't have any more than forty-four. So we now need... But I guess the biggest thing is from the safety aspect and the need aspect of buses, I don't call it over supply, but we have efficiency issues that are aged that we're not going to get into a, I think it was two years now, and we're like, we should have bought ten buses. But if somebody's saying a year, we might use five buses, two years, and the number would be ten. But is that something that, you know, we're at, you know, the right length and wrong, but is that something that maybe when we get back in January, we'll repurpose some money, we could also have an assessment of how many buses or asset thresholds that we need to consider rotating out and possibly use some of those funds for buses? Because the whole point is that you don't want to get into, you got ten or fifteen in a year, so eight, nine years down the road, you gotta replace ten or fifteen in that one month. So, and we are in a situation, so, um, so that's the question, so, okay. First of all, there's a lot of problems, two thousand fifteen and sixteen, there's ten, ten buses that were put in the fleet in that one year, so you try to start looking at that. And I don't know how many miles they have, only what's out there is running east, so, and then we have, you know, double the water.
As you, so that we know exactly what's going on with each one of the buses. One of the things that we do want to get to is the fact that some of them are still under warranty. To keep those warranties back, making sure we sit things done under warranty while we're still...
Mm-hmm.
What we're doing in this country, this is a part, like, this county, the labor, then on the part side, that refers to act, fees, that is a nationwide price policy that I see buses have set for the whole country. That is designed and designated by I T bus, the buses that run over by our bus. I will say that we will appeal to I C and get some of them around county, on the bound roads, get them by this guy. That's what that is. Public price that is extended to the fleet to over five hundred feet. So, and if we do these inspections, see, there's those are inspections, that's not actually the practice we're going to set. It's not how this thing is being replaced entire to the level. At that point, your first sale of the, uh, hey, would I propel us yet to replace those, give us parts for? Not just, not practically full, I could place those decisions and, and save that fire under deal big regulation for him to compile. The way this was set up, everything we do is with your prior approval. So you told me to throw, if you tell me not to replace tire, they want to feel big regulation. Cause there, there are situations where creating life needs, pressures from the kids, I'll, I'll allow that. This script will face me of illuminating what needs to be done, and if you make a decision, you tell me to do it or not. Fees for tires, for road cars, those things are somewhere, right? See that he's not gonna pay a dime, they should tell me to fix, and got that on the road, he's telling me to fix that. You can get an individual bill, and they can take those in more, whatever. That'll be with first order of all issues, and it's paid over, that has to be paid off. The family, uh, he's protecting, he has to play the bus, they can play more than that. Here he's protecting it, so they can get it in the bus and fly, so that they can actually... That, that's a bad moment, yeah. That system does have holes in the framework, but it's... Then on the fly, you have to be over to the... In the pole, you see there is pieces of ten, uh, sixteen buildings, top building, that building is nice too, and all those restaurants. We have another, a whole lot, like, two goal there that's good, that's... So, really, and, and still moving in, in fact, the five or two buildings, and you have ten by sixteen buildings, and then you have eight by six buildings, and that's the reference.
Okay, so, outside of need, so, okay. The question back in the last part is, um, is it run out in the weathering or whatever happening? And I know we're using a weed and pot before, it's air, the whole rust, anything, do you have one? And the other, the other question I have is, Dr. Dean is, uh, where maybe it's needed for, is there any type of camera, type of security, they have asked about? And how do they do that? Any other questions, as far as time? All right, I'm gonna ask you the very first, if there is anything you have.
He is, even in that, in the, uh, what being that I, that, the situation with Mr. Page, and the kind of thing that he did, and it was right, and he did, he was what he made to do that, he said, yeah, so I told him before, so... We give you a stuff, oh, it's all, uh, your own family, everybody, they have... He, he, he was in every time, and he... You have, true, have, uh, buildings, you can keep the dock, hold it, the fire, you have my right to stop, and... Well, I guess, uh, he was, uh, those were, uh, things, things, uh, happened to him. Yes, it's, 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 it's all... It will happen everywhere we stand, so, and, uh, I feel...
And so I guess as far as equipment, everything that, that is needed in terms of maintenance, and everything, and maybe the crew, button, program, and things, if they have all that, if they can transfer over to, besides this, okay, all right. That's the part of what, uh, page, your mayor can do, you know. So that's why I was having to do this. All right, so, uh, so the board, there's no other discussion, so I'll have a motion through. That's been motioned by Dr. Chu-Max, so I'll have a second. That's the second on this top, any additional discussion? And here's none on the face of things, Dr. Armin, and each man, thank you all very much. Next we go to our goals update, where we have a few attention reports, your safety report, your decision report, dropout report, and our safety report, and our COVID nineteen, uh, numbers update. Now, board, do any questions on any of these reports? Okay, so next we go to close termation for next discussion, our motion goes close termation. That's been motioned on before. Any discussion? Here you are, all of this, we've seen, Dr. Armin, and each man.
And, uh, here's the question. The first question is support for the five oh votes. Uh, except for two things, and the second discussion on the support of the motion is one way to discuss it through the final vote. Uh, before the next discussion minutes, if the fourth makes a motion, um, the top makes a decision at the final of the vote. And two, uh, there's no action taken against it. Then for, uh, to return to regular session, the fourth makes a motion, Dr. Chu makes a decision through the five oh vote. And that brings us to our next item, uh, on today's agenda with the discussions of policy B C B D. This is the board meeting's agenda. And the reason I put this on here is actually a couple. Number one is that we did work, you know, very diligently to have thorough reviews of all items as they are presented to the board. Also, you know, in good basis, the board gets the information needed to, uh, uphold and complete its duties, um, on behalf of the board. And so what I consider a completed agenda is what the board reviewed after reviewing. And so I'm responsible for working with Dr. Vines, who is, uh, voted me as president, to control the agenda and, of course, making additions and, and, and work with Dr. Vines. And the reason I bring this up for discussion today, and that's why I'm going to see if you're through the board, you have a call to the government, that unless there is an urgent or an emergency situation for an item to be added after we have our review meeting. There's a couple that was added to this meeting's agenda. And we didn't have time with emails over the weekend and other things to try to find out details so that we can have information to make our decision. Is that whatever the agenda is, we review with the agenda that we will see that following meeting that month. And unless there comes urgency matter or personnel or something that comes up that is, that falls into the category of emergency or urgent situation, that there would not be asked other items to add it to the agenda. And, and I, I bring this to you, I've had discussions with Dr. Vines about it. And I felt like we need to have this discussion to be very clear as to what the board's expectations is. Not just me trying to keep a, a tight agenda, is that we can't just constantly add things, especially when we have a very tight budget we're operating under and not be able to weigh out all of the, the impacts that could cause. Um, especially when they're added after our review meeting. And the second part of that is, is there are items that we are to consider as upcoming needs. We have plenty of items that are presented to us on the day of the review that are marked with access. That we know, hey, there's this item that we don't have all the funding for, or we don't have this contract to prove this. And we can see that those items exist and maybe for us to consider as that upcoming needs. And so I would ask that if we have situations, I mean, this doctor now, one's been in the insurance area, the other being the water, um, contract. Is that if we have those items that are certainly they can talk about, because I know that they would have been already in pipeline, because before we had our review meeting, that they were going to be either the line of duty or the issue of the package problem. That that place we know that exists, we can ask questions about after reviewing and not have to wait and find out about it on the day of the meeting. Is that okay with you, everyone? Okay. So, so just in the future, if, if it does make the cutoff to be listed on the, the type of information that we use while reviewing, unless it's an emergency or an urgent situation, I'm not going to sit on that agenda. Is that okay with you?
And I think that's a good thing because we took the entire, I mean, we took the whole day and walked the campus and then we got started. We took the entire day and we went to all of them and did the final vote. Yeah, it was a long day and we were very deliberate on how we misused every one of our items to put together. And so to be our host, or I'm, I said echo when Mr. Vines just talked, that we get more than just one or two phone calls go out. Get somebody to deal with the folks, we're seeing multiple companies, individuals, everybody else does projects. It doesn't come back to, to a more evaluation whether they're really low or really high. But then maybe in a strange way, when those folks are tallying before the work is done, that that is, I mean, we've got, I know Mr. Vines and Ms. Vines, Ms. Vines and I talked about. We've got now enough things that we've got before, so the reason was part of it. But we can have that information just to have these in between meetings to see what, what's going on. Because the whole point, the money is in sixteen section where the money's in eleven twenty-one. And before all that work is going forward, if somebody's chosen to do it, the board needs to approve the usage of those funds. Instead of finding out we spent seventy thousand dollars on all these various projects and the board didn't even see we even just weren't getting on. And if that had not been in the feared orders that the board laid out, we wouldn't see these projects to speak. You know, I think that needs to think, you know, Ms. Vines, you can make sure that she gets questions. And it's, it varies, it's from immediate action here, this one, this here two, this here three, nine two. I mean, it's like very disturbed. And, and so, you know, we're talking about, you know, when it comes to that phase, we look at the follow those that particular, we look to follow how we lay it out. Because we know, hey, this is internal and there's fifteen serial assaults to, we're hiring an outside vendor to come in and do these things. Because we don't want to go spend a million dollars and not know where it's at. That's why we, we very think about how that should be orchestrated. And the other side of it is that we don't want to just see, oh, well, this is the only guy that I call and they've got his best number. We want to see multiple folks or whatever. I know two is the number we need to get or one, but there is no harm in getting two.
So I think that's just another side of the thing is, you know, to give you more information with the fourth items that we're seeing. And, and then of course, like I was asking you, is that there not being surprise items added after we've had a very thorough discussion in the meeting about. So, so some, I think everybody's on board with that aspect of it. Is there any other questions or discussion on this item? All right. So that brings us to our last item on today's agenda, uh, with the security concerns. I think that's, I think that's the agenda. So do I have a motion to adjourn? Has been motioned by Mr. Vines. Do I have a second? That's by Dr. Sheamus. Any discussion? Any next question? I'll be very pleased to receive it by right hand. Any amendments? We all adjourned.